You ready, guys? Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing for a moment of reflection. For our service men and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Attorney Jamesy.
Here.
Mr. Goan.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chair for the Committee on Rules.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ice, have it, so moved?
I'd also like to make a motion to table item 7H.
On the question. This piece of litigation is being tabled this evening because Mr. Borthwick's vacant seat has previously been filled by Resolution 110 of 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ice, have it, so moved? Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Controllers' Report for month ending October 31, 2019. 3B Minutes of the Historical Architecture Review Board Meetings Held September 12 and October 24, 2019. 3C Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held October 16, 2019. 3D Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held October 16, 2019. 3E Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held October 16, 2019. 3F Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Special Meeting Held November 15, 2019. 3G Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held October 16, 2019. 3H Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held November 20, 2019. 3I Correspondence Received from the Pennsylvania Economy League Dated November 16, 2019. 3J Memorandum Received from the Pennsylvania Economy League Dated November 20, 2019 Regarding the Payroll Preparation Tax.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
Yes, I just have one comment on the correspondence that we received from the Pennsylvania Economy League. I just want to make one comment that, you know, over the last few years, every budget season, I've made a similar comment since I've been on council. That the projections and the plan projections that have been provided over the last few years from the Pennsylvania Economy League versus what is actually in the budget. In certain categories, the percentage that we have been over-budget is astounding and concerning. For example, this year, and again, there's probably several reasons for this, but departmental expenditures were over the exit plan projections by almost 30%. Non-departmental expenditures were over the budget, or the exit plan projections, rather, by 40.3%. Capital expenditures were over the exit plan projections by 106.7%. I went back and looked at, from 2020 to 2016, and I compared what the exit plan projections were over what the city had actually projected in their budget. And if you combine capital expenditures, departmental expenditures, non-departmental expenditures, we've been over-budget by almost 17, over 17.5 million dollars. Now, I think there's some explanations for that, and some of that money might have been warranted. But if you're considering exiting Act 47, it's a concern when you don't stay in line or at least close to what the Pennsylvania Economy League had suggested or had projected in their exit plan. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time? I have some comments I'll make. First announcement, just a reminder that this week through November 30th, newspapers will not be picked up. DPW will instead be picking up leaves this week. Bagging of leaves is suggested, and leaf bags are free for residents and may be picked up at DPW headquarters on Poplar Street or the Weston Field House on Providence Road. Again, leaves will be picked up this week, not newspapers. In observance of Thanksgiving holiday this week, City Hall will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th. And lastly, next Wednesday, December 4th, at 4:00 PM, council will be holding a special caucus meeting in chambers with members of the administration to discuss the 2020 operating budget. This caucus meeting will be open to the public.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Norma Jeffries, and I'm still learning about how this process works. And one of my main things that I brought to City Council when I returned to Scranton, which is just coming up on three years, and it was the street signs. And I was continuously getting lost in the city of Scranton. So I came to City Council and presented my concerns, and they were addressed. And I was very pleased and happy with that, and I think I gave us all a happy piece because that's how happy it made me. So since then, there's been discussion about it's coming, it's coming, and it's coming for the rest of the city. So, Mr. Goan, I do thank you for getting that letter to me, and the office did email the letter. The first thing that jumped out on the letter that was sent to the city about replacing the street signs was that it's a recommendation. So I thought, a recommendation? And that's dated from 2018, from August of 2018. So I started looking with what notes I have to see if it was ever final. And I thought, well, when does it become final? Because until it becomes final, it's just words on paper. So, you know, I went through it, and there were things that really concerned me. Because even though this KNS Engineering, they submitted their bid for $270,000 to make a database. And with them doing this database and using the GPS system to go about the city and to collect all that data, and to put it into a database, for what? So I kept reading the letter and reading the letter, trying to find out what is going to happen with that database. Because as stated, and you kindly introduced the gentleman that night, and it was only 1.5 person that's on the, that is employed for the street signs. So there's no way that those, that 1.5 person is going to be able to do the database. The KNS Engineering does say that their cost includes training of that person, or a staff is what they said. To me, a staff is several people to maintain this database. So then it talked about the budget, and that's when I thought, well, gee, the budget's coming up. And my little computer just, I couldn't get it up, so I do thank Joan for letting me read hers. But you address that, that those costs for those, this staff is not included for 2020. But yet, in the final sentence of this letter, something's going to happen on 2020, that they want to get started, this KNS Engineering wants to get started doing something, but it's not final. So, you know, those were some of the, some of the questions that I had. And also, they talk more about the traffic signals than street signs. So I know that the traffic signals and street signs, I'm not quite sure what the traffic signals has to do with street signs. I'm not sure if they're going to install traffic signals where there are none today, or are they going to put up the two? I know there's one on Greenridge Street that is just so out of, it's just so non-functional. It's just amazing that there aren't more accidents at that intersection. So I wasn't quite sure how the two of them were going to intermingle with each other. And then also, they talked about a grant, that 70% of the monies for this was going to come from a grant from this DCE Multimodal Transportation Center. And I thought, okay, I remember someone at council saying, just because you say you're going to get 70%, you don't usually get that. So if you don't get the 70% of the $270,000, is that additional money also going to be included in the budget for whatever year that this comes up? They're estimating that, the letter is estimating that it will be $81,000 that the city would need to put out for this project. So, being that it's not included in the budget, then, which means this isn't going to happen in 2020, I guess. So, it's to the rest of the things that are on the budget and that are talked about. This seems like, might seem like it's a small thing. But when you think about our universities that we have here, and people bringing their kids in for open house at the University of Scranton, Marywood, Keystone, Johnson, you know, Lackawanna, you know, people are coming into the city. I know how I was lost. So I just always think, of course, we have our GPSs today, so maybe that's what they use. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Les Spindler.
Evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Again, I want to talk about this garbage fee. The mayor says he wants to put it in with the property taxes, and I said last week I thought it's a bad idea. And here's why I think it's a bad idea. Just because it's going to be with the property taxes doesn't mean people are going to pay it. They're going to go, here, here's my check for property taxes, I'm not paying the garbage fee. He's not, he can't make him pay it. There's no way he can make him pay it. And then I found out today, I was talking to somebody who works at a CPA's office. They told me it's illegal. The federal government does not allow you to put a fee in with taxes, with property taxes. So the mayor should have looked into that before he had this brilliant idea. So, he better look into it before you pass this budget. Because this person said it's illegal, you can't put it in with taxes. There's nowhere on tax forms to put a fee in there. So, the mayor thinks he's doing his great job. I don't think he is. So, that's a prime example. He doesn't know what he's doing. And I hope, this is the start of something that does away with the fee forever. Because I've been coming here for 17 years and saying it's illegal. So, maybe we'll finally get something done now. So, I think this should really be looked into before the city gets in trouble. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Bob Bowles.
Evening, Council, Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, I think there's been a big issue about the monuments over at the front of the county. Commissioner Cummins has raised the issue that it should have Jesus Christ on it or God, and I believe that's what it should be, not some phrase out of a Bible or anything else. Tonight, we pledged to the flag, "One nation under God", not under some palm or palsman or anything else. And that's what we should be bringing up here. We have a God called Jesus Christ that should be on the monument, period, and nothing else. This community was built on strong religious values over centuries that people were here. The Holy Cross church I bought is over 115, 116 years. And now we want to change things. Our religion has always been our religion. Our values and our morals have always been what we've had in this city. And I think she needs the support to set people straight that no matter what denomination you are, there's only one God, period, for no matter who you are or where you are. If you don't believe that, you're an atheist, and you're able to have your rights. But those are our rights and our values, and I believe the majority rules. Last week, I brought up about Naog. Billy, I asked you if you could give me some information on what they're earning, what they're doing, and you said they supply you information. I don't think you would have that in front of you today, but I'd like to make that available in the future.
You could request that from the Recreation Authority. They should have those documents.
Pardon?
You could request that from the Recreation Authority.
Well, I could do that, but you had brought up that they had supplied it to you, that you were fully aware of their financial situation. Because I'm coming before council to raise the issue of Geisinger renting the park up there, the Naog Park, for a dollar a day on 280 spaces, which is 100 grand a year. I think we should get at least a minimum of $5 a day, which is 500,000 a year. Let the courts decide the property they want to give. If we can't make a deal with them, take it on eminent domain, and the court will set a value. And we'll give them the parking spaces at $5 a day. It's ridiculous not to take advantage. We have the supply, they have the demand. And they need a park there, no matter how they cut the mustard. So you guys need to do something, either disband the authority or do something different with it. But that money can not only go toward Naog Park, but it could go toward the assets in the city of Scranton of taking care of the people that are being screwed over with the garbage fee and everything else. Go to our police department, our fire department. It's got a lot of ways the money could be spent here than giving another asset away when we have the opportunity to do something. Jim Mulligan owes $87,000. Go for his money. You're trying to crucify a fire chief who risks his life at fires and everything else for crummy $400, $500, yet here's a guy who owes $87,000 to the sewer authority that he never paid for health insurance. It's a fraud, no matter how you cut the mustard. Yet you won't go after that, but yet you want to crucify and further drag our morale in this city deeper and deeper in the hole. Okay? And those are things that are what's wrong here. You can't be picking on Chief Disarno and criticizing what was done by a former administration. You move forward. But to discredit and keep humiliating this individual, I'm surprised most of the fire department, I'll tell you, is going to hell and don't even respond to a fire. See how you would like that. Or if this police officer decided not to go out and do something because we didn't give them the funding that we could take from Naog Park to give them a better armament, better supplies, better ways of protecting this community, and bring it back to what it used to be when you left your windows and doors open. Those are the issues I raise. I'm not here about self-serving. I don't need it in any way, shape, or form. I'm only here about the people in the city, and I've been doing this for how many years? And, you know, our values are changing. I think it's important to understand right now that, I think we should take a minute or give the people 50 seconds in here, since we've changed our values, our principles, and our morals as to our sexual orientation, that we should get a minute to be able to tell you about our sex life and everything else we're doing. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well, let's hope that doesn't happen. Our next speaker is Ron Elman.
Yeah, hello, Council. Kyle, it looked like the wind didn't blow our way, did it? Yeah, there'll be other elections. You're a young man. You know, the last couple of weeks, I heard some people that are a lot more politically educated and professional people and business people talk about politics. And I come to the conclusion, listening to them, that this city's in some real deep problems. Half the people are low-income and seniors. We all understand about the rain taxes coming, what a mess Candace Finnin has done caving in to the schoolteachers. We've got people wanting reassessment, all these lawsuits. This town really needed a professional person to handle these problems, you know? But we got someone that traveled 3,000 miles a couple of years ago to buy a mayorship for, what, 5,700 votes or something like that? I really, I really can't understand her even wanting this position. She has no knowledge, no mayoring, no experience. She has no political people that she's friends with in the local, locally. I'm not mad at her. She won, and I'll try to, I'll try to support her. Wish her luck. It's just, it's just that, I can't comprehend an outsider that, I bet she hasn't traveled 10 miles, how many miles of streets in the city? 250 miles or something? Is that right? I bet she hasn't traveled 10 miles of them. She doesn't know the people. She doesn't know the city like any of you people sitting there or anybody out here. I just can't see what she wanted this mayorship for. Yeah, maybe her husband listens to MSNBC or something like Bridget's. Every week, wherever I go, it seems like some poor soul gets a hold of me. I wish that she knew these people. I wish that people would start seeing her at the grocery store or wherever she goes publicly, Boscoff's. I wish she could get to know the people of this city like I do, like y'all do. It is such a good city. It needs some leadership so bad, and it hasn't had any. You know, Mr. Dougherty came in. We had to go through him learning how to be a mayor. Mr. Cartwright was so promising. Everybody had so much hope for him, and that petered out. Now, I really, like I said, I wish this woman the best. I wish she could, maybe she'll come to Mr. Bowles's party and learn, meet these people. Meet the people that really make this city up. Well, I thank you, and if you give me a second, I'd like to say something to Dave. Last Tuesday, when the seniors were waiting for their bus at Garrity's at Kaiser Oak, this poor little woman come over, and she started yelling and screaming at me about Jessica. I said, wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Elman, your time's up.
This'll just take a second.
Your, your time's up.
I said, this wasn't me. This was Dave with the long hair that said those things.
Well, I don't want you to speak for him. He's here if he wants to discuss it, he could.
She'll be looking for him now instead of me. I just thought I'd better warn him. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marie Schumacher.
Marie Schumacher. First, where is the audit?
Good question.
Pathetic. That's the only word.
It is pathetic, but if you saw the paper today, we sent a somewhat tough letter to them asking those hard questions, so we're hoping for the same answer as you are. I also did go back to the request for qualifications and noted that it was due on September 30th, which we all fought, so.
They didn't say what year, though, did they? Maybe it's 2020. Anyway. If anybody knows during fifth order how much, how many funds have gone out for the Beautiful Blocks program? I would like to know that. Now, my main issue tonight is walkability. And it's not our mayor's version of walkability. But the temperature is dropping, not tomorrow, but it soon will, and the snow will fall. And I went to the redevelopment, it was a parking authority meeting, and I asked about what we're going to do about curb-to-curb plowing this year. And stop, you can't talk about that. Because the parking authority only has the parking garages. The city does the on-street parking, so we couldn't get any answers. But we really need to do it right this year. We need to find out who's going to shovel out the kiosks. Is, you know, is ABM or whatever their acronym is. And we need to, we need to publicize the fact that the NDC has made the offer. I believe it's $6 a night parking if there's a forecast of snow in the garages. And we need to enforce so we can do the curb-to-curb. And many of the citizens in this downtown are senior citizens, and they use wheelchairs, and they use whatever kind of thing there's around. And we know how the snow melts and the drains don't take the water, and you have humongous puddles at every corner almost. So what are we going to do about the snow removal this year? Are we going to enforce it? Are we going to tell people, no parking? After, I believe it's already in the, in the books that there's no parking from midnight until 6:00. So, if we start enforcing that and towing people, I think maybe the second storm might be better. But we need to know what's going to happen, and who is responsible for getting those kiosks. Now, what if you find a parking space but can't get to the kiosk? You're going to get a $50 ticket? I don't know. Do you? Okay. Now, I'm equally upset, though, that we don't have anything in the, any funding for stormwater. I mean, how long can we drag this out? What has, I don't think the 1700 Block of Wyoming Avenue has been completed yet. You've got Kaiser Valley, you've got the East Mountain, and nothing. I mean, when are we going to get with it and actually do it? Is there money in the budget for at least those that have started, semi-started? The 1700 Block of Wyoming, Kaiser Valley? Are they specific, specifically included in the budget so those people know they're going to get some relief?
That's actually one of the questions that we had. And there is money allocated in the flood control portion of the budget. But to answer your question, I don't know specifically. That's one of the questions that we did have.
Okay, so that will be going forward tomorrow night? And does the city, I thought we did have a grant writer. Do we not have a grant writer?
Yes, we, we do. She works in the police department.
Why didn't somebody say that to Lenny last week when he was here?
Well, because, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but she is a police department employee that writes grants for the police department, but she is so good at it that she helps other departments in the city. She's kind of the go-to person now for everything grant-related.
Well, it would have been nice if somebody mentioned that to Lenny last week, but we'll see. And where is the report, my final, on what the, what we were promised when the contracts for the fire and police departments were extended through 2021? Have we, have the fire and police met their requirements? I seriously doubt it with the overtime. It was supposed to be reduced, and it's growing, growing, growing.
Right.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Hodewannitz.
Joan Hodewannitz. I want to thank Mayor Evans for appointing me to the Ethics Board, my fellow board members for their excellent work, city solicitor Jessica Escri and her secretary Denise Nich for their support, and city clerk Lori Reed for her help getting us started. Ever since Mayor Evans asked me last August to serve on the board, I have been working on implementing the provisions of the Ethics Code. I have been working on implementing the provisions of the Ethics Code. I took the initiative to set up the Board's first meeting. I wrote training materials, bylaws, and a plain English version of Sections 7 and 12 of the code. I drafted correspondence requesting the hiring of key staff members, the allocation of office space and equipment, and copies of all city policies and union contracts. I coordinated with the City Controller on the appointment of the Board's fifth member, mailed her copies of the Board's documents, and hand-carried a copy of the code to Lackawanna County's Director of Elections. I drafted correspondence to the City Clerk and the Business Administrator, highlighting their areas of responsibility under the code. I served as the Board's unofficial secretary, performing a host of administrative duties, including transcribing the tapes of our meetings and writing our minutes. I did this and much more because I took the Ethics Code and my role as Board Chairperson very seriously. These actions consumed much of my personal time and money, but I have yet to see a return on my investment. At first, this didn't bother me because I thought I was making a difference. I was wrong. Mayor Evans and four members of this council should be very familiar with the Ethics Code. After all, you wrote it and voted for it. You know that the Ethics Board can do little or nothing unless it is properly resourced. So, I have to ask, why did City Council, the City Controller, and the Mayor bother to appoint Board members if the city has no intention of resourcing the Board? If all you want is a training program, you could have outsourced that requirement. But if you want a Board that advises the administration on ethical issues, investigates allegations of ethical violations, and holds public officials and employees accountable for their actions, well, you can't get there from here. And please, don't tell me we were just about to issue an RFP for a solicitor. I can recognize a bone when one is thrown to me. Moreover, I doubt you can provide the support we need to perform our duties with the $25,000 allocated to us in the 2020 budget. So, here is my bottom line. I resigned from the Ethics Board effective 5:00 PM today. I will still attend council meetings and other civic events, but I will spend most of my time and money on more worthy causes, such as the Scranton Public Library and the Nativity McGill School. Your efforts to resurrect the Ethics Board may be well-intentioned, but you and the administration have done little or nothing to support it. If you want an Ethics Board and an Ethics Code that is more than a paper tiger, you will take my words to heart. If not, I suggest you ask the Board to dissolve itself forthwith. After all, what is the point in wasting $25,000 of the public's hard-earned money?
Uh, I too would like to know what's going on with the audit. And I would like to see the engagement letter for next year's audit, uh, in your backup, uh, in Third Order when it comes due. And I still wanna know why the union contracts and city policy letters are not on the website. They're public documents and the contracts are financial documents and all the public has a right to see them. And no, I will not do a right-to-know request.
Mr. Perry, Ms. Hodewannitz, if I may just address one thing. Um, yeah, I'm sorry to see that you resigned from the Board, but I will take exception with one thing that you just said, that this council has done little to nothing to support the Board. I, this is just my opinion. I appreciate your comments, but I think you're jumping the gun just a little bit. We have the budget now in front of us, so we can make amendments to that budget. It is not, you know, we had nothing to do with the administration proposing that $25,000 was put on that line item for the Ethics Board. So, we just got it last Friday. So, we could make, uh, an amendment to that to increase it once we evaluate that. That's number one. Number two, councils, as you know, is a legislative body. We have nothing to do with the city solicitor not putting out an RFP yet. And those things do take time among all the other things that are going on. I know it's important to you. It's important to this council. But to say that this council has done little to nothing in regards to the Ethics Board is just flat-out false. That is not true.
Well, I, I, I can't argue since my time is up. You can address this again next week and I will do a letter to the editor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fay Frannis.
Fay Frannis, granted. I'd, I'd also like to thank Joan for her hard work, but, but I think she has a point. Not, not about you, Council, at all, but about the fact that the Ethics Committee, their hands are tied because the unions take up most of the city. And they're, the union supersedes the Ethics Code. So, where are you going? I mean, if you find a union person doing something wrong, nothing happens. So, that's what I was hoping for, to get these union people in place and put them in their place. But they, they control the city and nothing happens to them. Chief DeSarno, exact. He should be fired. He lied, but he's not. So, anyway, just my opinion. Mr. Bolus mentioned people should mention their sex life? You don't need a sex life. All you need is a dog. That's all you need. So, enough of that. Now, back to the garbage fee. Now, I mentioned it at the hearing and I'm gonna mention it again. I don't know if the people are aware 'cause the paper never put it in, that anybody that's a landlord, they always pay the garbage fee for their tenant or else they raise their rent. They cover the cost 'cause the landlord had to pay for each of the tenants. Okay. So, now, I don't know who thought about this, but whoever did, I, I can't even comprehend where it's coming from because this city made lots of money, money that we needed to pay for the DPW to function, from all the landlords, 'cause this city has made up a huge amount of apartments, especially in the Hill section with the University of Scranton. So, all of a sudden, now we don't need that money. So, the landlords, they only get to pay once. And all the other apartments in their building, they don't have to pay unless, like Mr. Gahn said, if it's over four units, they have to get a private hauler. But those four units, they get their garbage picked up for free. But if you own a single home, you have to pay. So, you tell me how that's fair? So, and, and if, here's an example. If the property taxes come out in January, so people are gonna see this garbage fee. Some may not pay it. What happens if they don't pay their garbage fee in, in the property tax? Hmm. What happens if somebody sues? You say you want an alternative. Well, how could you possibly get an alternative between now and January? I mean, something's gonna have to really be done very quickly and, uh, really have to knock your heads together with the administration, Mr. Bozoni. I don't know where he's coming from, but he doesn't even live in Scranton. Hmm. So, I don't even know how he's even gonna get hired again. If he does, it's a shame. That's just another issue, too. So, anybody that's out there, anybody with a single home, they're gonna have to pay their garbage fee. But your next-door neighbor lives on a half a double or something, they're not going to. So, you tell me if that's fair. Lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit. And any business has to pay for the garbage fee, $25,000, even though they have a private hauler taking their garbage away and the city's not taking their garbage. Lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit. So, you get all these lawsuits, but the property taxes already went out. Now, what do you do? How do you take the property taxes back? Some people paid, some people didn't pay. Some people pay their garbage fees, some people don't. How do you, how do you, what do you do with that? You gonna sell their house 'cause they didn't pay their garbage fee? I don't think so. Last year, or a couple of months ago, rather, people didn't, in, in City Hall, they were assigned other jobs 'cause they had a human resources, so the lawyer had to pick up some of their work. So, they got like a $12,000 raise. I just find that shocking. Where I worked, when I got done with my, if I had time on my hand or whatever, if I was doing something, if someone needed help, my bosses say, "Go and help somebody else. Help them with the different type of work than what I was doing." He did it. Did I get a $12,000 raise for doing the same, for working eight hours a day? These people in City Hall are working eight hours a day. How do they get a raise for $12,000 from going a couple of hours of the day doing something different than what they normally do? They're still working eight hours a day. How many people in the private sector get a raise for helping somebody, helping another part of a job because they're shorthanded? You always try to help each other out. That's part of your job. You're there for eight hours. But it's a City Hall. So, and it's for that per bag maybe in 2020, 21? Uh, Pat Rogan always says it's wonderful for the senior citizens just to have a bag. No, it's not, because you forgot to mention that you're gonna get a fee as well, like $150, plus price per bag. Now, in Elephant, they pay $3 a bag, but they don't have any fee whatsoever. And if they don't put the sticker on their bag, they don't get the garbage picked up. So much for health hazard up here. They don't care. They don't, they don't mind. They, they just don't pick it up if it's not paid for, as it should be here. But that's not the case. And now, we're gonna have, so we should never, ever, ever, ever go to price per bag 'cause families with many children, they're gonna be paying $400, $500 a year for garbage, if not more. Think about it. All the bags plus the fee, $150 or more. So, don't ever forget that's, that's the equation in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that's all the names on the sign-in sheet. Is there anybody else that'd like to talk, Council? Um, Dave, and then if you guys wanna come up next year. Absolutely.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Um, last week I mentioned about different amenities. Uh, we had the Mayor's Music Festival. Phil, by the way, sighed. I used to earn $10,000, by the way. Uh, Mayor Connor's Music Festival. Our singing mayor, I miss him. Um, we used to have First Night. It was a little too large under the Dougherty administration, but that shrunk down to nothing and many others. So, uh, it's about time we start to think about the people here and, uh, keeping Scranton a happy place. Uh, before, a few months ago, when it, the issue was up of who we were going to choose as a councilman, our, uh, famous Gerald Cross grabbed me out in the hall and rode me up and down. And, uh, you know what? I, I kinda stood on that and tried to keep it mannerly. But you know what? I have an admission. With the quality of people that they had other choice, I'm not man enough to straighten out all the problems that Pell has created over the years with Scranton, Pennsylvania. That I'm just, you know, forget about it. All the police contracts and fire contracts that could've been, uh, settled for much better. Now, I wanna talk about trash. I have a vacant lot. I didn't attach it to my house. It's adjacent to my house. I purchased it for top dollar. The taxes go up every four years. I am paying for that lot once over again. From what I read in the newspaper, I'm gonna get another $50, $250 tacked onto it. And, uh, by that time, it's every three years, I'm paying again, once over for it. I don't see anything in the paper. I reread the article. I kept the article. And then what about tax-exempt properties? Are we gonna pick up their trash? Has anybody ever, and I realize that you people can only talk up there and pass legislation, but we heard about liens back in 2015. Has anybody ever had a lien for non-payment of their house, uh, for trash? Uh, because I happen to know somebody, uh, that said, "I'm not paying that bill." And they sold their house about a year ago. And I would bet that they, you know, never reconciled with the trash. If you at least put a lien against it, you could've collected that money upon the sale of the house. And, uh, once again, it's, instead of leaving cans and bottles out in the yard, I have to store paper and cardboard for the leaves. And I'm pay-to-throw. Uh, every place that I lived with pay-to-throw had certain properties with plenty of trash laying around week after week. And it's just ungodly. Eventually, the animals get into it. It blows around. It gets all over the place, including your lawn. Uh, I used to have to feed a skunk on the other side of my house, so I didn't walk out on the porch and get sprayed. You know? Luckily, he did prove productive. He sprayed the landlord. Now, uh, what about tax-exempt institutions once again? I mean, is, are we gonna just pick up their trash anyway, even though they would probably owe the fee? And it's, uh, one hell of a deal for somebody 'cause it's like $4, $1,200 if you have a four-apartment house. After that, from what I understand, you have to have a trash dumpster and, uh, take care of it that way. But it, that would lower it to $250 a bottom, uh, a year. And then we have the Section Eights, uh, which, you know, I don't, I don't, uh, if somebody's unable to pay the rent, but years back, I listened to somebody in the lunchroom. I kick the work and jerk out and I get $200 a month extra. He was getting, uh, $300 a month for the place at that time, which was years ago. $300 a month. He got $500 a month from Section 8. And by the way, the house next to me was a Section 8 a year ago. And they couldn't be bothered taking their recycling down the front. So, please reconsider that. Strike it down and let's start over. Time to hit the reset button for real.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Sure. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeannie Murtaugh and I am a registered nurse at Geisinger Community Medical Center. This is Alex Latoro, Latorto, I'm sorry, Alex. And he is one of our union reps. We do have a local union representing the nurses at the hospital. We are the Northeast Pennsylvania Nurse Association, which is part of PASNAP, a statewide organization. Our union was formed in 2007 and represents over 400 registered nurses at CMC. We're in contract negotiations right now and actually are working without a contract. Our contract expired at the end of October. The outstanding issues in negotiations are all related to staffing, recruitment, and retention. We're facing significant challenges in all of these areas and these challenges contribute to a vicious cycle of short staffing, which results in hectic working conditions, which leads to more turnover, which leads to even shorter staffing. This makes it difficult for us to provide the level of care that our patients preserve. I'm here on behalf of the nurses in the hospital to ask you to please review the attached update on our current union contract negotiations. That would be the material Alex just provided you with. And send a letter to state your support for a fair contract to Geisinger Leadership. We have included a template for a letter of support in your packets. We've also provided a draft of a resolution for the council to consider. In 2018, turnover in the hospital among nurses was over 30%. And for new graduates, it was over 55%. During that fiscal year, Geisinger hired 66 staff RNs. During that same period, 53 RNs left for a net gain of only 13 nurses. That was not enough people to relieve our short staffing conditions. The hospital is currently addressing the short staffing with contracted agency nurses and by asking our hospital staff nurses to work extra shifts above and beyond our normal working schedules. In 2018, we had 85 short-term travel nurses and 32 international agency nurses contracted. The short-term agency nurses are typically contracted for a three-to-four-month assignment with the possibility of renewing those assignments for up to one year. The international agency nurses are contracted for a three-year period. These agency nurses, combined with the extra shifts across the hospital, are the equivalent of 235 full-time, permanent, of 235 full-time, permanent Geisinger staff RN positions. We would like to see those staff positions hired at Geisinger, giving us lower staff turnover and more local jobs. I also feel that we should take a very brief moment to express our disappointment at some of the inaccuracies put forth by Geisinger in the newspaper article in the Scranton Times last Thursday. While none of their statements are flat-out false, they were misleading by what they left out. Geisinger said they have a joint staffing, they had language for, to jointly tackle staffing, implying that we had not been willing to participate in that. Well, they did have language, but it was not as strong as ours. And so that's why that is still up in the air. They also said that they proposed an enhanced paid-time-off program that would give more hours of vacation time to 88% of the nurses, also misleading, while 88% of the nurses gain between 12 and 52 hours of paid time off, the first 24 hours of routine illness would be taken out of that, instead of out of our sick time. So it's really not accurate to say that 88% of the nurses are getting more time off. Those kinds of things are going to hurt us in recruitment and retention, and when we are hurt in recruitment and retention, our patients suffer because we can't provide enough staff to take care of you the way we want to. The Geisinger health system is worth $7.7 billion. They report $4.2 billion available in cash and investments. Geisinger paid its top 33 employees over $32 million last year. Our hospital, Geisinger CMC, is one of their most profitable. We believe it's time for Geisinger to invest in direct patient care. We ask you to send a message to John Bravman, the chairman of the board for Geisinger. He is leading an executive team that has been unwilling to accept our union's proposals that would guarantee the quality of our, quality of care our patients deserve. Our city residents utilize the services of Geisinger CMC, and we, as the frontline caregivers in the hospital, are committed to win basic improvements in staffing for our neighbors and our community. You can send a letter to Mr. Bravman's office address or via his email. If you choose to send a letter, please send a copy to our union staff person, Alex Latoro, so that we can compile our public support to take to our next contract bargaining session. Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. I, I know, my mother was a nurse for 40 years, and this council as a whole, we've been very supportive nurses in the past. You know, we've all had someone that's been sick or sick ourselves, and, and you know the workload that, that nurses have. And it's just, you know, they're, they can't go without saying that to the backbone, they're what makes hospitals work. So what, what we can do, if you want to leave the information with Kathy on where you would like a letter sent, we will have something drafted up, and then we'll, after we read this information, each council member will have their, their chance. If they wanted to undersign that letter, they'll also undersign along with me and, and have that sent out.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments today?
I have nothing at this time.
Attorney Dempsey, any motions or comments?
Yes, actually. I was not going to speak tonight because I was busy tracking down an audit, and actually, all of us up here are working on questions in anticipation of the public caucus on budget. So I thought I would let it go at that. But I have to say, in light of Mr. Bolus's comments, I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't speak out. I have to go home to four children tonight, and I will not do that without speaking out against what he said here today. While there was laughter in the gallery, I found nothing funny about it. Speaking about someone's sexual orientation to me in this respectable public forum of city council, I thought the comments were disappointing, discouraging, and deplorable at a minimum. If he had named the individual, I think they would have been discriminatory and/or defamatory, potentially. And under either scenario, I find them unconscionable, untenable, and unacceptable in this public forum. As it stands now, sexual orientation is protected under federal law, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. It's also protected under state law, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. It's also protected under local Scranton ordinance, which is actually quite liberally written, and has been in effect for years. We were ahead of our time on that one. It is unconscionable to make these statements. The Scranton I know and the Scranton I love was born and created by a melting pot of ethnicities, races, nationalities, and now sexual orientations. I like to believe, and I want to believe, that his opinion is one of the minuscule minority in this city. And I would hope that any member of this council, or any government, or anyone, would be welcomed in here with the same dignity, respect, and kindness that I was, not only by these gentlemen to my right, but by everyone in this building and all of you, regardless of sexual orientation. I hope this does not have to be addressed again. Our council rules prohibit it. I'm going to ask our, any of our, whoever's holding the meeting in the future, to please aggressively defend this. I'm going to ask our solicitor to step in if this happens again. It is unacceptable, and it should be prohibited. Joan, I'll make one final comment to you. I'm sorry that you resigned, but I would like to at least speak, number one, to council's commitment to the Ethics Board. Anyone who knows me knows I have been on that bandwagon since day one, and I know my councilmates have as well. Contrary to what a lot of people think, we talk a lot behind the scenes, all of us, and each one of us wanted this to work and to move forward. And I want to defend Mayor Evans here in particular, because I went to him on numerous occasions. As many people know, I'm trying to lead the charge to some extent, to make sure that this ethics code is signed by the City of Scranton employees. And he has texted me, he has called me, and he has participated in personal, face-to-face meetings with me about this code. And I will agree, city government does not work as quick as you want it to. I learned that very quickly as well. But we are committed. It will go on. Unfortunately, we will need to replace you. I'm hoping you're replaceable, because I know you've done a ton of work. I thank you for the work you've done. But I do want to reiterate this council's commitment, and again, I have to say, Mayor Evans, I know, is committed as well, and I think it would be unfair to characterize him in any other light. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gahan, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to follow up on the conversation we had last week with Mr. Cerebro and some of the flooding issues that he has up in the Kaiser Valley area. So we did send something out to the DPW and Mr. Gallagher, asking for an update and then a potential follow-up meeting on that. So we'll wait to hear back from them. Related to that, we, we did receive some correspondence from our city engineer, which was forwarded by Mr. Bolzoni, regarding the rehab of the stormwater system in, on Briggs Street, up in the Kaiser Valley area. I just want to read really briefly, because I'm sure people will be interested in this in that area, a project description. So the existing Briggs Street stormwater conveyance system was constructed in 1967. Since that time, additional stormwater conveyance piping has been connected to the system. Also, additional development has occurred in the surrounding area, contributing runoff to the system. That's obviously one of the major issues in that area. Because of this and heavy storm events, the existing inlet bubbles over and stormwater sheets, stormwater sheet flows across Briggs Street onto the adjacent properties and streets. By constructing a new and more efficient stormwater conveyance system, these problems will be eliminated in most storm events. The project will consist of installing new and more efficient inlets and larger pipes to adequately convey the runoff to Kaiser Creek, its original outlet point. The system has been cleaned and maintained by the city and the former Scranton Sewer Authority in the past. I, I do know that the city is going for grant funding, and I believe in the 2020 budget, there is money in there to match the potential grant. So hopefully that project comes to fruition. The second thing I, I want to mention is, I, too, as I mentioned, Ms. Hodawanitz, I am sad to see you resign from the Ethics Board. However, I will say again, I respectfully disagree with your statement that council has not done enough. I think, first of all, you know, we didn't write the ethics code. We used Reddings as a model, and took many of the wording and really the spirit of that law and made it into our own. Secondly, Attorney Dempsey is correct. If, you know, every time I ran into a roadblock in the last five years, I would have resigned years ago. Attorney Dempsey's correct when she says that government does not move at the pace that all of us would like. Government is, it's difficult to deal with. And, and keep in mind, especially, and I'm not making excuses for this administration, but they're winding down now into a transition that's certainly not at full strength as they, as they were at one point before Mayor Evans took office. But this year has been a difficult one, with everything that went on. So I think we do have to take that into account. I am really confident that the Ethics Board is going to move forward. It is going to take on the training aspect and everything else. We are going to evaluate whether the figure that's in the budget is correct and sustainable. I know that you disagreed with that. But again, I, I know there's frustration there, but I'm really confident that moving forward, it will be everything that it was supposed to be when it was first hatched. And the last thing I want to mention is, Ms. Jeffries had brought up the, the street signs. So when council passed this legislation a few years ago, we were giving this company the authority to come in and basically create a database for us. Now, when you hear database, I remember when we were passing this legislation, a lot of people said, "Why can't someone from the DPW just go around and take a look at the sign and mark down whether it needs to be replaced or not?" In fact, that was my first thought as well, before it was explained to me. There's an awful lot that goes into this technology, number one, and into this database, and it is extremely beneficial to the city. Now, not only do we have a database, we have the technology to go along with it, we don't have the staff, as you had pointed out. Mr. Reed was here a couple weeks ago. I think it's one and a half employees or two employees, whatever it is. We, we don't have the staff that certainly I think anyone on council would like, but then again, we are a distressed city, and we are always in some kind of financial turmoil over the last few years. So it's difficult to add in what probably should be seven, eight, nine, 10 positions. And at one time, I believe the, the employees in the sign department, there was a lot more employees in there. So they're certainly not operating at full strength. I think, Ms. Jeffries, what the plan is, as I think I had mentioned to you previously, they're taking now all the data that this company was able to compile, and they're working slowly, because there is only limited staff, but they're working section by section. So it is going to take time to replace all the signs that were identified by this company, and there were quite a few, from what I understand. It's going to take time to replace every single one of them. And I hope I answered all your questions. If I didn't, please let me know, but that's my understanding of the situation. Thank you.
And I have nothing at this time.
Five B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, series of 2020, in the principal amount not to exceed $12,750,000, providing for the dated date, interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment and place of payment in respect of the note, accepting the proposal attached hereto as Exhibit B, from the financial institution named therein for the purchase of the note, naming a sinking fund depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the note, and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the note.
Excuse me. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
Five C for introduction of resolution accepting a $1,000 donation from Bryden American, given to the City of Scranton Police Department's Special Operations Group.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Five D for introduction of resolution accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board in approving the certificate of appropriateness for Charles Jefferson, 2030 Tillman Street, Suite 203, Allentown, PA 18104, for the following alterations, restorations, and renovations to trim and decorative woodwork, siding and masonry, windows, doors, and associated hardware, light fixtures, and demolition at Scranton Spruce LP, 200 Adams Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503, the former store in Fister Building.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question, all those in favors, introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title filed with Council Number 78, 2019, and ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2020, to and including December 31, 2020, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2020.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Yes, I need a second, please.
Hello, is anybody alive here?
Yeah, I'm, give me one minute.
We just need a second.
Is that the budget?
Just someone say second, we can move on.
Second.
Thank you. On the question?
Yes, on the question. Sorry, I think there's a little confusion there. That's okay. So just a few things on this. I lost my train of thought now. The first thing I'd like to do is make a motion to request that the administration provide city council with an alternative analysis to the budget that has present, the budget that has been presented. We could call that a Plan B, realizing the speculative nature of the following items in the 2020 budget, including but not limited to the sale of refuse receivables, the conversion of the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill, the lowering of the garbage bill from $300 to $250, and the conversion of the business privilege and mercantile tax to the payroll preparation tax.
Second. Is a motion on the floor? And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
I think, on the question for the motion.
Go ahead, Greg.
You need to go on the question for the motion.
Sorry. Hang on one second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, just in regards to this motion. I think, you know, over the last couple days, as we're looking at the budget and putting our questions and stating our concerns, one of the things that, that we would like to see, and the reason that I made this motion, is we would just like to see the administration provide a Plan B. With all of the moving parts in this budget, as Mr. Bolzoni and Mayor Evans has described, my concern, and I think my colleagues share this concern based on our conversations, is that we're one of these moving parts to stall out, we would be in a difficult position next year. So what we're asking for is for the administration to change the assumptions of the budget, noting the ones that, the, the major points that, that I had just made, and give us a assumptions if the budget, if adverse things were to happen. For example, if the sale of refuse receivables didn't bring in $2.2 million, whatever that figure is in the budget. If, for example, as many people had expressed, and we expressed in the caucus, the conversion of the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill, if that didn't pan out, if it were challenged, lowering the garbage bill from $300 to $250, also with the litigation that's involved with the garbage bill. There, I could go on and on. There's so many moving parts here that I think it would be malfeasance on our part not to look at an alternative and a Plan B just in case, and hopefully we can all meet somewhere in the middle.
Yes, also, Mr. Gahan's right, we did discuss this, and this is something the administration may very well have already done, when they're putting together their budget models. But if they have, we haven't seen it. We've only seen the finished product of the budget that came to us. So I would like also to see any information that they may have, and if not, well, then this is a good, this is a good time to, to bring up any kind of exit strategy, backdoor plan, secondary idea for if one of these many moving parts does- backdoor plan, secondary idea for if one of these many moving parts does not work. Because this budget is a little bit different than most, and there are more than one things that could hit a snag along the way. And if that happens, I want to have a parachute to get through this and not have a big hole in the budget come 2020. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Okay. Now, I'm still talking on the question with the actual legislation now, and I just want to go through a few things before we end here. As I mentioned, you know, in looking at this budget, I do think it's a bit of a gamble. And I don't think that the city, in its current financial state, is in any position to take any major risks at this point. As I mentioned, the mayor and the business administrator said there are many moving parts. My fear is that if one of those moving parts stalls out or does not materialize, the taxpayers will be left holding the bag next year, and I do think it could be kicking the can down the road. So give us a Plan B. I think something that's a little bit more realistic and sustainable. One of the things that I had mentioned in my motion was to conduct a sensitivity analysis and a Plan B, to give us an idea of how much room the city has for each variable in this budget, each moving part, to go the other way, to go adverse. So change the assumptions of the budget if adverse actions happen and assess the risk, because there are a lot of risks, in my opinion, in this budget. One of the items that we have talked about, and that I am still unclear on, especially with the logistics, is the conversion of the refuse bill rolled into the real estate tax bill. For example, and I talked to Mr. Bolzoni and the mayor last week about this, we'll take a commercial business like Kelly's Pub and Eatery. Right now, they pay a private hauler to take their garbage away. Under this new plan to roll the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill, Kelly's Pub now will get their real estate tax bill, and they'll have to pay the refuse bill, according to Mayor Evans and Mr. Bolzoni. So they're paying twice. They're paying for refuse removal, the service that they're not receiving, and then they're paying to privately haul it away. I don't think that makes sense, and I think that could be definitely challenged. The second thing is in relation to apartment buildings. For example, anything over four units, they have to have a private hauler. Under this plan, the, this apartment building, anything over four units, would get a real estate tax bill, and they'd have to pay $250 for a service that they're not receiving. Again, I could see that being challenged, and I don't know if we're on shaky legal ground. The other part of that is an apartment building that has less than four units. So right now, each apartment is paying $250 for the garbage, or $300 for the garbage that they put out. Under this plan, from what I understand, now the apartment building owner, the landlord, will get one bill for the whole building, so they'll pay $250. Well, that's not fair either, because for somebody like me who is in a home, I pay $300, now everyone else is kind of getting away with not paying the garbage bill. Councilman Donahue had brought this up. People with multiple pieces of property in the city, will they get multiple bills? Okay, John Smith has four pieces of property. Does he get $1,000 worth of garbage bills? And then is he expected to come down to the treasurer's office or to wherever to fight with them about the fact that he has a vacant piece of land? And the reason that, you know, you would think that this would be thought out, and maybe it was, but as we were talking about in caucus, the system is screwed up right now. We got so many complaints over the last few years about people getting garbage bills that weren't supposed to get them, and so on and so forth. So if you make this move and it's, the details aren't thought out, I think you'll have a lot of angry people on your hand, and we could have more lawsuits. Lowering the garbage fee $50, well, that's great, in theory, but if all the things that I just mentioned are challenged, then we may lose significant revenue, because we're charging $50 less. Not that, you know, anybody wants to pay $300, but from a financial standpoint, it won't make much sense. Then next year, we'll have to raise property taxes to make up for that in some way. And also, in mentioning all that, we're under the guise of a major lawsuit with the trash bill. There's litigation ongoing. So how does that play into this as well? And when will that be resolved? So those are the things that I, the logistics that I hope we can get answered and clarified here December 4th before we pass this budget, and I fear that, again, we may be taking a gamble. Also, just on some of the bigger picture items, the sale of refuse receivables. This budget is, you know, propped up by the $2.2 million that the administration is saying or expecting to receive from the sale of refuse receivables. Now, I could be wrong, but I remember a few years ago, the city entered into a contract with a company that is escaping my mind at the moment, doing the same kind of deal. We did this, I think, in 2014 or 2015. I talked to Mr. Bolzoni last week. This is a complicated transaction. We don't know that we're going to get $2.2 million. And Attorney Dempsey had mentioned in the back that, and I agree with her, that we would like to know what kind of data they're using to calculate that figure and how they came up with that figure. How does this play into the transfer of the delinquent refuse bill collection away from Northeast Revenue Services? There's another variable that we're not really sure of yet. So if that money doesn't come in, we're looking at a deficit for next year. The amnesty program that is mentioned in the budget, we need more explanation on that. What does that look like? How much extra revenue do they expect to gain from that? It's not clear in the budget narratives. I was, I mentioned this last week, but I was not surprised. The health care increases in this budget are astronomical. Mr. Bolzoni states in his budget narrative that he underbudgeted the health care expenses last year. And I had brought this up last year. I thought we were understating expenditures in that, in that regard. So we have several questions for Mr. Bolzoni on, in the health care, from a health care aspect. I won't go through all of them, but hopefully we can get that answered as well. The other thing that is noticeable in here is the spending. The spending over the last five years, capital expenditures, non-departmental expenditures, departmental expenditures. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, if, you know, I just did my own analysis, which wasn't difficult, we're spending almost $17.5 million over what the exit plan projected for those three budget categories. Now, I know that there's some explanation as to projects that had to be done over the last few years, but that's a really significant amount to stray from our exit plan projections. And of course, PEL, the Pennsylvania Economy League, has no, no issue again this year with the budget. Surprise, surprise. Attorney Dempsey has been on this, as was detailed in the paper, the lack of the audit, which hopefully next week we'll get answers on. So the bottom line here, ladies and gentlemen, is what I would like to know is, if you take out all the variables in this budget, all the moving parts, we will have a deficit. So what does the tax increase look like? The Ameroso Plan that everybody was all about the last few years, the recovery plan that everybody says they adhere to, calls for moderate tax increases every year. I'm afraid that what, we've fallen into the trap, and I've mentioned this the last few years, is not to raise taxes for a few years, because it's politically expedient, and then all of a sudden, everybody gets nailed with a major property tax increase. So I do think that we need clarification from the administration. We need to know what that tax increase would look like, had, if we need to go that route. And all these variables that I mentioned, again, I think we need to know what the analysis looks like and what the Plan B is. And that's all I have.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to table item six A.
Excuse me. We're almost, we're almost there. Is there anyone else on the question for item six A? If not, then all those in favor of passing, of six A passing reading by title, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, so moved.
I would like to make a motion to table item six A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table six A. Anyone on the question?
Yes, I just want to mention that the reason that we're tabling the budget, I like the approach that we're taking this year. In years prior, as I had mentioned, I think two or three weeks ago, I could never figure out why this was done, but council would hold a budget session with the administration prior to the meeting for a half hour, 45 minutes, and I would be here with quite a few questions, and we'd, the clock would run out. And I don't know if that was done purposely, or, or if, you know, that just is the way it was. But I think this year, what we're doing is tabling the budget, taking our time, not rushing through things, having a caucus on December 4th with Mr. Bolzoni and the mayor, and there's no clock on the caucus. We're going to go through, hopefully, all these questions and concerns, and then December 9th, I think, is the plan for the final vote, but we do have until December 15. So I just wanted to explain why we are tabling the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, seven A for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 76, 2019, amending file of the Council Number 45, 1996, as amended by file of the Council Number 110, 2005, updating the list of historic properties in the City of Scranton by creating the local downtown historic district, to expand the list of historic properties to include all buildings located within the central business district, and amending the process for legislative review of recommendations made by the Historical Architecture Review Board.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 77, 2019, regulating the operation of BYOB clubs, prohibiting the business of BYOB clubs between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., and providing for enforcement of these provisions, including penalties for violations.
As temporary chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, really quick on the question. I just want to thank the administration and Chief Graziano for putting forward this legislation. It's something that I think really came about based on the castle in North Scranton and the shooting there months and months and months ago. Hopefully, this legislation will improve that area and other areas where these establishments operate all hours of the night, and there's really no regulations on them. So hopefully, this will improve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, yeah, this, there's such a good effort on this from the spark that created this, which was the castle, and we was just a joint effort, right from District Attorney, from our local police department, Chief Graziano, and, and this body, just making sure that we institute something that prevents further issues happening at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning. And I believe this is a step towards that, and this is definitely a safety-first decision. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 184, 2019, reappointment of Catherine J. Gilmarten, 1525 Capous Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. Catherine Gilmarten's term on the Historical Architecture Review Board expired on October 11, 2017, and was held over until October 9, 2019. Her new term will expire on October 11, 2022.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 185, 2019, reappointment of Nell O'Boyle, 603 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. Nell O'Boyle's term on the Historical Architecture Review Board expired on October 11, 2019. Her new term will expire on October 11, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven D legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 186, 2019, appointment of Walter Barron, 1016 Luke Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission for a five-year term. Walter Barron will be replacing Stephanie Bressler, whose term expired September 23, 2018, and was held over until August 27, 2019. Walter Barron's term is effective October 11, 2019, and will expire on October 11, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven E legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution 187, 2019, reappointment of Aja E. Wentum, 711 Harrison Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission for an additional five-year term, effective October 9, 2019. Aja Wentum's term expired on August 24, 2018, and was held over until October 9, 2019. His new term will expire on August 4, excuse me, August 24, 2023.
As temporary chairperson of the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven F legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 188, 2019, appointment of John J. Harrington Jr., 102 Lilac Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Scranton Parking Authority, effective October 1, 2019. John J. Harrington Jr. will replace Santa Corby, who resigned effective July 4, 2019. John J. Harrington Jr. will fulfill the unexpired term of Santa Corby, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2022.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven G.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven G legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven H previously tabled, seven I for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 190, 2019, appointment of Todd Pousley, 1137 Rundle Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Planning Commission for the City of Scranton, effective October 11, 2019, for a four-year term. Todd Pousley will be replacing Martin Turi, whose term expired December 31, 2018. Todd Pousley's term will expire on December 31, 2022.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven I.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven I legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven J for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 191, 2019, appointment of Michael S. Cummings, CFMP, 809 Crown Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term, effective October 1, 2019. Michael Cummings will be replacing Joseph Healy, whose term expired March 19, 2019. Michael Cummings' term will expire October 1, 2024.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven J.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven J legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven K for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 192, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Moretti CPA to perform the City of Scranton gas card audit services for all gas card activity from April 2016 through March 2019.
As temporary chairperson of the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven K.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven K legally and lawfully adopted. And if there's no more, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned.